Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. I will now call this meeting to order. First, I'm going to read our land acknowledgement. The city of Agoura Hills acknowledges that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Chumash Nation. Descendants of Chumash still remain, and we honor and pay our respects to their elders and various groups that make up the past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of our lands and waters. We have a responsibility and commitment to elevate the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of the city of Agoura Hills, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. I will now defer to Robbie Nessavich for our pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much. I will now defer to our city clerk for the roll call.
Good evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Anstett?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I will defer to our city attorney, Candace Lee, for the report of the closed session.
Just thank you. Direction was given, no reportable action was taken this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve the agenda state your names?
Mayor Protem Wolf, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
City Councilman Chris Anstett, seconds.
Thank you. I'll defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstett?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving on to intergovernmental, special purpose committee, and departmental reports. I will defer to Councilmember Klein Lopez for the Clean Power Alliance update.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester. I do have an update this month. In June, we finalized our rates and budget process for the next fiscal year, and unlike many organizations that are really struggling this year for understandable reasons, I'm happy to report that Clean Power Alliance is in a very strong position, and a lot of this is because we engage in long-term energy contracts that are now kicking in and paying off, and we also take advantage of innovative bond fin- prepaid bond financing, and that saves us about $40 million a year. Other good news is that we should hit our reserve target. Remember, we're only seven, eight years old at this point. We should hit our reserve target 50% by the end of the fiscal year, and it's, that's a huge, huge issue for us to have stability in such a volatile market. We are going to continue to expand our customer programs and marketing. We also invest in workforce development and apprenticeship programs that will continue as jobs move into a greener economy. And the most important thing to share is that our rates are actually going down. That's really important for customers to know. Remember, there are two parts to your electric bill, the generation and the delivery. We are on the generation side, so our rates are going down. We are actually very, very, if not more competitive with Edison on this front, and later this year, when Edison changes their rates, it's very likely that our greenest rate, our cleanest rate, is going to be on par with Edison's least renewable rate. So, really proud of Clean Power Alliance. We're doing amazing work, and, you know, unfortunately, we were supposed to have a board retreat on Friday with all of our cities and unincorporated counties, and it's in downtown, it was in downtown LA. We did postpone it for, you know, just to be safe with all the uncertainty in downtown LA, so hopefully that will happen in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And can we just, for the benefit of our residents who are watching, I believe 100% of our residents, am I correct in that?
So, our residents and businesses were defaulted into the 100% green renewable rate, and over 90% of them are still there. They can opt out, they can opt down, and they can opt out, but most of them stay.
Yes.
So, even at the, even at the most, at the highest rate, which is the cleanest rate, it's, it's still highly competitive with Edison's.
So, I would encourage those residents that haven't signed up or have, you know, signed out of it, when they see the rates that are coming out of Edison and they see the CPA rates, hopefully they, they will realize that it'll be the benefit of everybody in our community for them to switch over with no additional cost.
100%. Thank you, Mayor.
So, thank you. Are there any reports from staff? Seeing none? Any reports from other city council members? No? All right. Oh, yes?
This isn't a report. I just want to say that our farmers market is going so strong, and I am so excited about it. I went there last week, and I was a little worried because it didn't seem as busy as it was on that opening night, but I talked to some of the vendors. One of the vendors was like, I actually went to go buy some gluten-free breadies, like, I can't sell you anything because I'm completely sold out. And other vendors also said that last week was even better than the first week. They're doing just incredibly well. So, for those of you watching, we have this phenomenal farmers market, 4:30 to 8, right? Not 48, 4:30 to 8 between Wizzen and where the Regency Center used to be.
Thank you. So, moving on, we're now moving to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the city clerk, and she will distribute to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city councils shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. And before I defer to the city clerk, I would just like to remind our residents that we can only listen to persons that are addressing us during the public comments section because it hasn't been an agendized item. We cannot respond or discuss it, so please understand that is why you will not hear anything from us. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. No written correspondence has been received. We do have one public speaker this evening, Jennifer.
Welcome, Jennifer. You will have three minutes to speak, ending when the red light appears on the podium.
I spoke the last time about becoming a sanctuary city, and I didn't hear anything back, so I understand that you can't talk to me now, but when I ask for something or think about something, and then there's no answer, then I'm not sure what I'm supposed to think about that. I want to bring up the pledge of allegiance right now. Again, I did not stand. Not only do I not believe in God, I'm an atheist, but I think it's exclusionary to do a speech that mentions God as opposed to Mohammed, or Allah, or Vishnu, or the horn god of whatever wicca believes in, or Satan, or whoever you believe in. It's exclusionary, but more important than that, please remind yourself of the last words of the pledge of allegiance, with liberty and justice for all. And then look at what's going on downtown in LA, when people at Home Depot who want an honest day's work are getting swept up and sent to God knows where, when our president has asked the Supreme Court to eliminate the convention of torture so that he can send people to countries that will torture them, when police, ICE are raiding a kindergarten graduation and picking up their parents as the kids are screaming. That is not liberty or justice for anyone, and I think we should suspend the pledge of allegiance to a flag that I don't know how you can support at this moment in history. This is the most scary moment in history for America that I can ever imagine, worse than slavery, worse than anything I can imagine. We are losing our country, and you are pledging allegiance to that flag, and at least we should suspend that pledge until it's, the things it says are true, and they are not true in any way, shape, or form right now. So, I will not stand, but I think you need to take a look at this pledge and those last lines and tell me if you think you're doing the right thing. So, that's on the pledge. Now, regarding the bike, which I've had an issue with forever, Amy invited me to a meeting I went to with the sheriff and several people. It was a very cordial meeting, I felt. Would you agree? Yes? But I have to say, I got the feeling that they're sort of saying, we've done what we can. We've spoken to the teachers, we've gone to the, some students, we've talked to some, you know, pupils or whatever. Clearly, nothing's changed. I mean, I'm, I'm seeing on my Ring Doorbell constantly stuff going on, and one of the things that was brought up was that bikes are considered, electric bikes are considered bikes by the DMV and at Sacramento, whatever. So, I said, well, you need to talk to Sacramento, we need to get the rules changed, because if we can't identify the people, bikes with some kind of identifier, or if we, the rules need to change. And, and it was suggested to me that I, that the citizens should be doing that. Well, I could barely get 40 people to vote in-
Jennifer, I'm sorry, but the three minutes are up, so if you could just conclude?
Well, I'm not capable of reaching 19,000 people in Agoura. You guys have a website, you have Instagram. If you can't reach Sacramento or the DMV, as members of a city council, you can't expect me to be able to do that when I can't get 40 people to vote in my community when we're trying to change the board, the HOA board. So, please don't throw it onto me. If the citizens won't take care of themselves, the city needs to take care of the citizens.
Thank you.
We have no further speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. We are now moving on to the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the city council on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Councilmember Anderson moves to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second. Deborah Klein Lopez?
I will now defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstett?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? Oh, sorry, I missed, I missed a bit. Going back, our next item is to hold a public hearing conduct, on vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts relating to Assembly Bill 2561. I will now open the public hearing and defer to the Assistant City Manager, Ramiro Adeva.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I am going to defer over to our Human Resources Manager, Celeste Burden.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. As explained in the council report, Assembly Bill 2561 enacted in California in 2024, an effective January 1st of 2025, addresses the issue of staffing shortages in local public agencies by promoting transparency and accountability in workforce management. The bill aims to ensure that local public agencies proactively address staffing challenges by fostering transparency, encouraging public engagement, and facilitating informed decision-making to enhance public service delivery. The bill acknowledges that high vacancy rates can lead to increased workloads, employee burnout, and diminished public service delivery. It emphasizes the importance of public access to information regarding agency employment practices. The key provisions include a requirement for annual public hearings. Local public agencies are mandated to hold at least one public hearing each fiscal year to present the status of job vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. This presentation must occur before the adoption of this agency's, of the agency's final budget. Enhanced reporting for high vacancy rates. If an agency has job vacancies equal to or exceeding 20% of its authorized full-time positions, the agency must provide additional information during the public hearing. Although the city's current vacancies do not meet the 20% threshold previously described, in an effort to provide complete transparency, the following information is provided. Total number of vacancies. At the time of this report, the city has one vacancy, which is less than the 20% threshold as outlined in AB 2561. The vacancy is for a full-time position of Community Services Coordinator. Furthermore, a contingent job offer has been made and accepted. Number of applicants for positions. The city received 42 applications for this position. Average time taken to complete the hiring process. The city's hiring process is approximately eight weeks from the beginning of recruitment to a tentative start date. Opportunities to improve compensation and working conditions. Since the city does not have a union, during every two-year budget cycle, the city invites employees to discuss compensation, health benefits, and other employee benefits. This concludes the presentation. I invite any questions or comments.
Thank you very much for that report. So, before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? Seeing none? No, I think this is a very straightforward procedural, you know, event. I would like to say I'm happy to hear that our one vacancy has been filled, and I look forward to meeting the newest member of our staff. So, I will now open the public hearing, and I will defer to the city clerk for public comments.
We did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Before closing the public hearing, do any council members have any further questions of staff? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Oh, I didn't open it, did I? I did? Okay, good. Yes, we'll now move on to deliberations. I shall start. Do we have deliberations on this? Yes, would you like to start, Councilmember Klein Lopez?
I'd be happy to start. I chatted with our city manager to make sure I understood the agenda item. It seems pretty straightforward, as you said. Happy to hear that we do not meet most of the thresholds that this bill is targeted to address and ready to proceed with the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstett?
Pretty much ditto on that. I mean, I, I, I think this is a good thing for the public to know, I guess, and also the employees to know, and I think we do, I think we do a great job here in Agoura to make sure our vacancies are filled fairly properly and, and ready to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
So, I too chatted with our city manager to make sure that I understood this. What I understand is, and I don't know the history of this bill at all, it is a bill designed for agencies and jurisdictions that are facing difficulties, and I am so grateful to have such a strong city staff that the purpose of this bill is not something that applies to us and appreciate the very straightforward report on what's happening here in Agoura Hills.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Echo fellow council members. Councilmember Anderson made a good point of the intent of this legislation, I think, was for cities that, or municipalities, public agencies that have issues, and like a lot of legislation, it's really good intentions. Sometimes I, I think that, I mean, it's in law, so I read a lot of the opposition for this bill too, but that doesn't matter. What matters is that we don't have some of these problems, but I do appreciate that it will provide voice for public employees, and I think that's really important, and I have no issues with it, ready to move forward.
Thank you. I agree with all my fellow council members. This is something that was obviously required for other cities. It does not apply to us, but we are in, we have conformed to all the regulations. A thank you to staff for keeping us on top of everything. So, no formal action is required on this item. We will now move on to a public hearing to waive full reading and introduce Ordinance Number 25-478 regarding an amendment to the municipal code to change the Planning Commission regular time from 6:30 PM to 6:00 PM. I will now open the public hearing and defer to the Community Director Development, Community Development Director Denise Thomas.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. The item before you this evening is a request to amend Section 2803 of the city's municipal code to change the start time for the Planning Commission from 6:30 PM to 6:00 o'clock PM to more closely align with the start time of the city council staff meeting, and to allow discussion items to occur earlier in the evening so that perhaps we can end the meetings later, or so that the more robust discussions that sometimes the Planning Commission has don't, don't fall into part, parts of the evening where we are limited in our outreach to the public. We did have a meeting with the Planning Commission, their first meeting in May. We had a meeting, and we surveyed them to see kind of what their thoughts were on this, and they are in support of making this change. That concludes my presentation. I have nothing further. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. I will defer to the city clerk for public comments.
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Before closing the public hearing, do any council members have any further questions of staff? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. We'll now move on to deliberations. I will start with Councilmember Anstett.
I think it makes sense, start at 6:00, just like we do, and I don't see any issue with it, and I'm ready to vote to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Yeah, so 80% of us here were on the Planning Commission, and so we, I, I always thought it was-
Ouch!
I always thought it was interesting that it started at 6:30. I didn't know where the, why they weren't the same, so this makes total sense, and I can make all the findings and move forward to it, having experienced it myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein Lopez?
So, we have a member of the audience who wants some fireworks on the, on the dais, and I was, I was thinking this, this item wouldn't do it, but now you've just thrown down the, no, no. It, it makes absolute sense. It's not very often that the Planning Commission meetings go too late, but sometimes they do, and so if it helps people get back to their families and all that, happy to accommodate. Thank you.
Councilmember Anstett?
I have nothing to add to the wise words of my fellow council members. I too agree.
And I agree too, and I think it's, it's better for staff. Hopefully, it'll get to you home a little sooner, because I know you work really hard for all these, praying for all these meetings. So, I will now call on a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation to, for Ordinance Number 25-478.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
City Councilman Chris Anstett, I'll second it.
Thank you. I'll defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstett?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments from staff? Are there any comments from staff? Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I just wanted to let everybody know that this Sunday is our, not only is it our first summer concert in the park featuring Mirage, the tribute band to Fleetwood Mac, but it's also the kickoff to our summer. So, Sunday, the concert in the park begins at six o'clock. It'll be a beautiful evening. And then Beach Bus, Summer Beach Bus is back, four round trips to Zuma Beach. That starts on Monday, and it'll be followed up by a movie in the park over at Reyes Adobe Park on Saturday, the twenty-first, and I think Muana is our first movie that we're showing. So, I encourage everybody to check out the website, follow us on social media, on Instagram, because we will post updates and keep people engaged in it, but summer starts in Agora Hills this Sunday, and a happy Father's Day to all the, the dads in the room. We hope you come out and celebrate Father's Day at the concert in the park. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other staff reports? Seeing none, are there any comments from city council?
I just want to let the public know that we had an official ribbon cutting today for our Hawk Light. Oh, boy, I was going to say what Hawk stands for. Remind me what the, what is it? Somebody help me. Oh, my gosh, where's Charmaine? Not high.
Help all walkers cross.
Say that in the mic.
High-intensity activated crosswalk beacon.
And you wonder why I didn't have that memorized. Thank you. Yes, it's very, very exciting. It is right across from our Reyes Adobe Park, so excited to have the public use it for the movies in the park and upcoming Reyes Adobe Days and all of the activities that the park in particular offers. And there is a learning curve with it, so I appreciate that we are reaching out to the public about what the different flashing lights mean, but it's somewhere in between a stop sign and a regular street traffic light, so please watch out for that, and I'm very, very happy that this has finally come to fruition, and I want to give an extra shout out of thanks to Kelly and Charmaine, and of course, our city manager Nate Hamburger for putting up with me for the amount of time it took to get that up. I was, I never wanted to give up on it, and I'm glad we didn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Councilmember Wolf?
In, last week, Councilmember Anderson and myself attended a ribbon cutting. It was in Agora, not officially Agora Hills, but for a new bridge in Chesbrough National Park that will help improve accessibility, and it's ADA compliant, and so it's really going to help connect the trail, so that was a, a really special event, and I encourage everyone to go out to Chesbrough and check out that new trail. And it actually adds more trails to, to that system, so that was really exciting and a great event, along with the ribbon cutting, as mentioned earlier, for our farmer's market that occurred two weeks ago. So, it's been a busy two weeks in Agora Hills. Thank you.
And actually, mayor, oops.
Yes, go ahead.
I do have something. I am so proud to have, no pun intended, our pride flag up. It was such a joy to come by City Hall and see that up there, and I wanted to let everybody know that I had an opportunity. I just happened to run into Supervisor Horvath, so I was able to share with the supervisor that we up here in Agora Hills for the second year running have our pride flag raised, and she was very excited to hear that.
Thank you. And I would just like to end by thanking Councilmember Wolf for running last, the last prior meeting, since I was absent, and I was having a great time, but I can see you all did too, so thank you so much for taking everything on. And just lastly, as we said before, to all the fathers out there, happy Father's Day, and especially to the father of my children. All right. So, if there's nothing further, the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for six PM on Wednesday, June the twenty-fifth, 2025, in the council chambers of the Civic Center located at three zero 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 one Lady Face Court, Agora Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.